Good evening. It is six o'clock. I would like to call the September 10th, 2024 City Commission Meeting to Order. Yes, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Adam Jack.
Present.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Here.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
Commissioner Minton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you please rise and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing when we finish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to just acknowledge that tomorrow is the 23rd anniversary of the tragedy of nine eleven. I'd like to recognize the first responders who went into danger, those who gave their lives, those who are living with the trauma of having survived. I'd like to acknowledge the thousands who were killed on that day and similarly those who've survived and are living with that pain every day. So let us observe a moment of silence. Thank you all. Okay. Commissioners, do we wish to allow public comment today?
Yeah, I'll move to allow public comment.
I'll second that.
Jared, do you call the roll?
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Commissioner Minton.
Yes.
Mayor Adam Jack.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there anyone who would like to address, to make public comment for this work session?
No.
Oh. As we proceed through the agenda, are there any comments from commissioners today? Peter? I would just like to acknowledge our Public Utilities Program, which received three outstanding awards recently. Manhattan was selected as the 2024 recipient of two awards from the Kansas Water Environmental Association, both the Class Five Waste Water Treatment Plant Award and the Outstanding Biosolids Management Program. And this is, they have received this award a number of times in the past two decades. Congratulations for achieving that once again. The city's wastewater treatment plant was also honored by the National Association of Clean Water Agencies in July, and the plant was awarded the NACWA Peak Performance Platinum Award for achieving 100% compliance at the gold level with no permit violations for the past six years. So congratulations to city staff. Okay. We have one item on our agenda today to review procedures having to do with change orders.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Wyatt Thompson, Assistant City Manager and Interim Public Works Director. And Brian Johnson, City Engineer, and I will kind of walk us through this presentation this evening on construction project change orders. I do want to provide a bit of background and context on just kind of broader project delivery challenges and context for why change orders exist. And then Brian will get into the details about change orders, what they are, the definitions, and then some policy considerations that we'd like to discuss with you this evening. Not looking for a vote or anything, but we will be looking for direction on kind of how to proceed with change order next steps.
Wyatt, could I just say that I think we're getting a new city manager in a month, and it seems to me that this is something that we should have her input on, not just to be making up rules and policies at this point.
So I understand that perspective. I think a lot of our presentation tonight is education, and if we get to the end of that education piece and discussion, if you don't want to, if you want to wait until later time to provide direction, that's certainly up to the group of you. But I do think that the discussion and the education would be worthwhile to have this evening. Just from a context perspective, this is a bit of our self-evaluation of current processes and procedures. We've internally recognized that we'd like to update our construction contract documents, which becomes the basis for how change orders are ultimately administered in that contract process. Our current contract documents are sufficient, they're not perfect. They're largely developed by in-house staff over, and then adapted over a period of time, which has the potential to create some inconsistencies. And so we'd like to spend some time to update those, potentially looking at some of the suites of contract documents that are available in the engineering and construction world and building and adapting those to our purposes rather than our fully homegrown type of documents we have. We currently lack a policy to govern the administration and approval of change orders, which is really the bullet point that we're here to talk about this evening. We have some limited ability to, in our selection of contractors. We have a process where we select the lowest responsible bidder who selects, who submits a responsive bid. That is our standard of selection. That usually isn't a problem, but if there is a question about the contractor's ability to deliver that product, or some questions about the prices that they've submitted, we're limited in how we can seek recourse for those type of issues. We also, related to that, are inconsistent in our documentation process when we do run into issues. We have a lot of great consultants and contractors that we work with. They're not perfect. We don't expect perfection, but when we do have those issues that come up, we don't always have the best records to look back on to say, we see a pattern of problems here. That's an internal record-keeping kind of perspective, but it does present some challenges when we run into those problems of selecting that contractor or consultant for a future project. One method to fix that could be a pre-qualification list. That's a process that KDOT utilizes to pre-qualify contractors for their jobs. We don't, it's a fairly robust process. It has to be maintained and administered and fairly and kept up with over time. We don't have any process like that currently, and so we're fairly limited in the way that we can select contractors. It's typically by price. It's not by qualification, except in rare instances. And then a huge challenge in the project delivery is just a critical shortage of staff. Engineers, project managers, inspectors, they're hard to recruit for. It's a very competitive market. It's not just a City of Manhattan problem. It's not even a public sector problem. It's a private sector nationwide issue of finding enough people to assist with and manage these large public infrastructure projects. And so we've been hiring more consultants to assist with management and project delivery.
Is that just that there aren't enough people with the experience to manage a project of that kind of scope?
I think there's a general shortage of engineers. Brian can speak to more.
Yeah, there's just an across-the-board shortage, whether it's, you know, Kansas, California, Connecticut. The entire nation is just struggling with this. Lack of engineers, lack of inspectors, lack of contractors. Some of it is, there's an emphasis on not wanting to work outside in poor weather, poor conditions. Some of it is with college being expensive. People go to college and then, you know, they have to go get a, you know, very well-paying job to pay that back. So there's a couple of things that are playing into it. For the last 10 to 20 years, we've been told from multiple people that the number of engineers that are graduating out of college is going down. And that's how the whole STEM program came around back in the early 2000s, was to try to get those numbers up. The largest graduation rates of engineers and project managers was during the NASA years of the 60s, 70s, the space program. Everybody wanted to be an astronaut. Everybody wanted to go to the moon. After that, that peak has really leveled off, and we're just not graduating the number of people to replace the retirees.
Okay.
So this isn't the point of the presentation tonight, but we did want to give you this context, and Brian did a great job kind of summarizing that. But this slide gave you some more detail on what that staff, what those staffing challenges really are. It's been a lot, it's been a lot of years since we've had full employment in the Engineering Division, since we've added the, you know, our traffic engineer. We haven't had one since 2015. Our project inspection manager hasn't been filled since 2019. So what happens when we have those open positions in engineering or traffic or our project management team is that, you know, people wear multiple hats. They pick up the critical, absolutely essential pieces of those jobs and do them themselves, and then they stop doing some lesser important piece. And then the other pieces that those positions would do either don't get done or get delayed, you know, which, which, you know, we bring up those lists of issues. We know you hear from the public, from consultants, from contractors, from builders about delays or issues or problems that are occurring, and we're trying to help understand the, help you understand the context that we're working in. With, one solution to that staff shortage problem is to hire more consultants to assist, and we have done that more so in the last couple of years than, and in the recent past. Those are folks that are coming on to manage that communication between the contractor and the city, or between the contractor and the city and back to the public, just trying to manage those aspects of the contract and that public engagement. It's very expensive to do that. Where those project managers, consultants are much more expensive than staff. They're not dedicated like our staff would be either in terms of 100% of their time. They're giving, you know, much less than that based on the contracts that we're paying. So it does create some of those incontinuities. And then losing those project managers, whether they're staff or whether they're consultants, they're who move on to other places, that lack of knowledge creates, or that gap that's created when they leave a project is very challenging to overcome. And in some cases, we're still dealing with construction, labor, and supply chain issues. It's not necessarily COVID-related, but it is a continuation of what we experienced during that period of time. Contractors and consultants are very busy. Lots of public projects are happening. And then there's certain issues with supply chain related to water main, to traffic signal components, which adds risk, which adds time to projects, and just becomes more challenging to administer some of those details and potentially creates the need for some change orders in the process. We wanted to provide a bit of context for our project delivery methods, and this relates directly to how change orders occur in these projects. So there's really three delivery contract methods that the city utilizes for projects. Design Bid Build, and the second two, we've kind of grouped together for the purpose of tonight, Construction Manager at Risk and Design Build. They're different. They have some nuance to them, but in terms of tonight's discussion, they're similar in a lot of regards. Design Bid Build is a step-by-step sequential process. There's no overlap in those steps. So you design the project, you bid the project, and then you go construct the project. Because there's no overlap in those, and it is sequential, and it's typically the longest of the processes, we select that designer at the very beginning of the process by their qualifications, and then we work with them through that design process, and then we select the contractor to build that project primarily based on the price or the low bid. The majority of public infrastructure projects, the majority of many projects across the country are in this format. It's a very traditional method. It works really well in a lot of instances. There are some communities in Kansas and across the nation that are experimenting with other, with these other delivery methods for a construction manager or design build or variations of those for public infrastructure projects. It's something we're talking about internally, but it isn't really something that we've pushed significantly, at least for street and utility type of projects. But those options are there. All of our Design Bid Build contracts are unit price contracts, which means that when we submit the project details out to contractors to bid on, we give them a list of all of the items of work and all the quantities for those items. And so a bid form might say, you know, that we are going to remove 1,000 square yards of pavement. We want to know your price for removing one square yard of pavement times 1,000, and that's the number that they write in. We want you to install 500 feet of water line. We want to know your price to install one foot of water line times 500. That gives us our price, and we add those up. At the end of the project, we measure all of those quantities and determine how much was actually installed. Sometimes there's discrepancies between what was designed on paper and was actually needed in the field. So maybe they actually installed 501 feet of pipe or 1,010 yards of concrete based on the conditions in the field. And so all of our, all of those projects are set up in that way and then paid based on those actuals.
Okay, so that just, that's a weird assumption to me. But because like marginally, it can't cost the same for a unit of square yard of asphalt to remove, right? Like, you can't, first of all, you can't just remove one square yard because, I mean, I guess you could, but once you start getting like construction equipment involved and things like that, like it should, I don't know. I'm having a hard time figuring out how that actually works.
Let me clear.
Yeah, clear, clear a little bit.
A little bit, a little bit of clarification. On a unit price bid, you have the unit, so square yards in Wyatt's example. Then you have the contract quantity, 1,000 square yards. So you bid that 1,000 square yards for that price per square yard. You don't bid one square yard multiplied by 1,000.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes more sense.
Okay. It would be the equivalent of bidding a house remodel, and you're bidding removal of your cabinets. You don't bid one cabinet, you bid all the cabinets, but you bid it per cabinet. So does that make sense, how that unit price works?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, here's how much it's going to cost to remove all of this asphalt.
To remove 1,000 square yards.
And here's what it costs per unit.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it.
It's just like buying oranges at the store, where you pay per orange or per pound. In this case, we're paying per pound. That would be like a unit price.
Okay.
A Design Bid Build would be buying by the orange.
Okay, I guess.
I think what Peter's trying to ask is, there is a savings when you're doing more than just, like, the larger
Yes.
unit you're doing. There's usually more of a savings because you're not bringing new equipment for every yard.
Right.
But then therefore, if we, let's say it's 1,000 square yards. If we go 500 square yards, we ask them to back that down. Is that splitting it in half? Is, I mean, like, there's some, Peter's saying was, isn't there savings with doing more typically?
There is, there is savings with doing more, but you pay for that unit price. So again, in Wyatt's example, 1,000 square yards, you're paying $10 a square yard. If you only put in 995 square yards, you still pay that $10 a square yard.
Got it, okay.
The savings comes in, in every unit price bid, there are certain items that are, that are set. Mobilization, erosion control, traffic control, those units, those fixed costs are a less percentage of the whole project.
Right.
The smaller your project are, the bigger your, your fixed costs can be 30 or 40%.
Exactly, yeah.
Put up all your traffic control, all your pavement striping, all of those are fixed costs. Erosion control, the larger your project, the smaller those fixed costs are.
Yeah. And that's, I guess that's where I was confused.
That's.
Is that, that marginal cost, right, for the additional, it's not, it's not a one-to-one.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
So we gather those prices. We have a, we have a fixed price contract. Well, we have a contract price at the, at the end of that is also, it's $500,000. That's the contract you award. It's built on all of those unit costs and quantities. There's no contingency built into that award. And so if, as those quantities adjust based on field conditions or based on, you know, changes that occur through the process, that's what creates that, that change order, that adjustment to that contract, because we have that, that fixed amount that the commission has awarded to proceed with. And if we need to deviate from that, there has to be a process to amend that contract, which is really what we're here to talk about tonight. Construction Manager at Risk and Design Build is a little bit different. We, city has primarily used those delivery methods for vertical construction. So the Flint Hills Discovery Center, the Joint Maintenance Facility, the Recreation Centers, we're using the Design Build method at Seco Park. That's where we're selecting that team from the very beginning of the process or forcing the marriage of a team at the, throughout the process to work together. So we're not designing the whole project and then finding out who gets to build it. We're, the contractor and the designer are working together throughout the entire process to value engineer, find the best value throughout that design. We're selecting that team based on their qualifications to do the work. Price is a component of that, but it's not the primary or only component of that selection. There, as changes occur, that contractor and the builder and the city are working together collaboratively to resolve those issues. And that contractor, what they're bringing to you, what, if you recall the Seco Park project, the contractor brought a guaranteed maximum price to you to build that project. Within that guaranteed maximum price, they had, there was a construction contingency that was built into that of a certain percentage that was to be used for unforeseen issues. There was also an owner contingency that's built into that for the city to address our own issues during that project. But there's a total maximum price that they're going to deliver the project for. So you won't see typically change orders on Construction Manager at Risk or Design Build projects, because those change, those changes are all withheld within that guaranteed price that you all approved. And there's contingency for us to work through those issues as they arrive, or as they arise. So that's the, one of the biggest differences for the, for tonight's discussion is really that, that use of contingency on certain projects and not having a contingency built into our more traditional Design Bid Build type of, type of projects.
Which one did we do for the maintenance facility?
The Joint Maintenance Facility was a Construction Manager at Risk.
Okay. Do we, I went through this earlier, and I didn't see it, but are we, or can we talk about, like, timelines? I have had people ask me about, what are they called, liquidated damages or whatever, if the, if the project isn't done by a certain time. Do we do that?
Yeah, I can talk about that one.
Sure.
When I come up.
Okay.
I'll talk about that when I get, when I get the back half here.
When it gets to the podium, okay, sure. So this, this slide kind of spells out the steps of the Design Bid Build process, and I'm not going to go through every one of these boxes and read all of these, but, but it does show you the, kind of the sequential nature, the step-by-step process and sequence of those events. The things that I would highlight here are really related to the timing and the timeframe of these, of these projects. So from the time that we, you know, initiate a project until the time that it's ready to go to construction, could be one to two years, depending on the complexity of the project. And then the project itself could take six, eight, 12, 24 months, depending on the complexity and size of the project itself. So that length of time can sometimes create differences from when you start a project to when you're actually implementing the project. As you move through design, I'll note that, you'll note that there's several opportunities here for review, where staff are engaging with those consultants or with our in-house design staff to, to review and really, and review the plans. And that is an opportunity to find issues that don't become change orders along the way. And so I point that out because there's a lot of work that happens in that design phase to prevent issues in the field, to incorporate as much data and as much as we can know into the plans to make sure that the contractor is told exactly what they need to do once they're on the job. Obviously, we can't see everything. We don't know everything that's underground. There are certain things that change in that timeframe, but staff and consultants are attempting to, to resolve those issues during that design phase so they don't become issues later in the field. One of the first things we do in that design phase is a topographic survey. We're doing that in month one. We're not actually building until month 24 or 18 or somewhere in there. Things change in that period of time, and the closer you get to that 100% set of drawings and getting ready for bid, the harder it is to go back and change those plans that, to address every single one of those issues. So sometimes it's cheaper to address those issues as a field change in construction rather than redraw all of the drawings to make the plan set perfect to address. You'd never catch up with that timeframe. So change orders are occurring in this construction phase. It's one of the many things that is occurring and is a responsibility of that project manager and that contractor to work through. You'll notice that project management is the one thing that's consistent across this whole thing. This is why it's important to have that educated, committed staff or a consultant team to be that consistent point person throughout the entire process, because decisions made early in design often show up in construction. And if you have that gap of people, you know, that knowledge isn't always transferred through the entire process. And then the bottom of the slide, you can see the roles that you all have in terms of approving projects, approving budgets, and awarding contracts. A lot of those contracts, you know, with the right staff can be done in-house, as that staff is short or busy on other things. That does result in those contracts for some of those type of services. Any questions on, that's kind of setting the stage, I think, for some background on change orders, but any, any questions on that information before Brian jumps into the details?
All right.
Thank you, Wyatt. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Brian Johnson, City Engineer. Do we want to talk about contracts first, or we want to go through these first? Yeah, let's just talk about contracts quick. So Design Bid Build, there's typically two different kinds of contracts that we issue. One is a working day. So every day that it's not raining, not snowing, that work can progress. They're counted a day. So you may have a contract that has 200 working days. Typically, there's about 17 working days in a month, 22 total days, but you have about five rain days. So it comes out to about 17 working days a month. So then you can multiply that out and kind of have a guess of when you think it's gonna, when it's gonna stop. All of our working day contracts are behind because last winter was really severe. We shut down for eight weeks. Working day contracts are more contractor favorable and they're more price favorable, because the contractor knows if I get a really bad winter and I can't work for eight weeks, I'm not going to pay liquidated damages. There's also what we call a drop dead date or a drop dead contract. So we pick a day, August 1st, we want this done. So we pick that day, we bid it, and then the contractor knows they have till August 1st to get that done. If it rains all summer, that's not my issue. If it hails all summer, it's not my issue. If they've got a issue getting material, not my problem. Come August 1st, we issue liquidated damages. Those typically cost more because now that risk is put back onto the contractor. Anytime you assign risk in a contract, it costs you money, just like, just like any other contract that you have. Whoever's picking up that risk is going to inflate their costs because they have a risk to it. So that's typically how we bid our two projects.
Do we have any that are drop dead dates right now, like any active projects?
Yes.
Which ones?
North Campus is a drop dead date, so we have a drop dead date on that. Because there's so many phases, we had a drop dead. Kimball had to be open by this date, Dennison by this date.
Right.
So then we have a drop dead date on that. Our working day contracts are Fremont, because we knew we were going to go through a winter, and we didn't want to assign that risk to somebody and pay for that risk. And then you could have had 50-degree days every day.
Yeah.
So Fremont, and then Houston is also a working day contract.
Okay.
So we kind of, again, that project manager is key, because that project manager really has the input on that decision.
Right. Okay.
So Brian, we had obviously a huge change order with the spreader at the new Rob Ott place.
The spreader?
Wasn't that what it was for?
The salt.
The salt.
That wasn't a change order.
No, it was a redo. So it wasn't a change order, but it wasn't done right in the first place.
Okay, I don't know anything about a spreader at the JMF.
It was a half a million.
I think it was the, it's the piece of equipment that.
The racks that hold our spreaders.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So whose responsibility was that?
Well.
I won't ask you, but I just think that's, to me, that was a contractor built.
It was a C Mar, that's correct, or Design Build, correct.
Yeah, and.
And I can get that information and send you a memo tomorrow on it. I just, that wasn't my project, so I don't want to speak on something that wasn't.
I understand that. I just. I understand that, I just, I just feel that we kind of ended up holding the bag on that one, that's all.
Yeah, and let me, let me get you facts, okay? Because I, I'm not as well-versed with that facility as Rob was, as Rob built it.
Jamie, do you have?
I was just gonna say, I think we talked about that one. And that was, that was an oversight of miscommunication in drawings. And ultimately, it was approved, which is why we're having to go back with the additional financing. But yeah, not, not the change order, it's just through the CMAR, right Jared?
Yeah, during the design process, during that CMAR contract, a conceptual design of that spreader rack was provided to city staff. And there's, you know, different conversations between us and the contractor and the designer about how much feedback was provided. And at one point, it got approved during the review process and didn't get looked back to. And by the time the spreader was there, we, the rack was there, we, we were too late. So this isn't necessarily a change order. This is something we're correcting after the fact with the new contract along with some other things, but.
I, I think the issue is, and it's been said to me, is there's no one was ever, we're saying there's no one to hold accountable, which I would say is incorrect. There always should be somebody to hold accountable.
Yeah, I think for us, it's how are we holding that accountable? And, and tying then project management into.
Yeah.
Responsibilities on each project so that we can do that.
I can't speak to that project because I wasn't as involved in that project as I am in other projects. Again, we have 30 projects going on. I have projects now that I have engineers working on that I'm not up to the day-to-day. And when they come to me and they say, I've got a $5,000 change order, okay, what's it for? Why are we doing that? So I, I have to get caught up to speed on that stuff also. Okay, we ready? Okay, so real quick, let's just talk about what a change order is. And a change order is an add or a deduct from an original bid in the contract. That's all a change order is, you're just changing your contract amounts. And that could be either an add or a deduct. We had two deduct change orders just this week that came through on a couple of different projects. Now, deducts you don't see because we're taking the contract down. So all you see is the adds. But we do have quite a few deducts, I would guess. A quarter to a third of our final contracts are deducts. Actually, I've got some data here I can show you in a minute. Change orders can be additional contract units. Again, Wyatt's example, we want to go one more joint on the street because the neighbors come out and told us he's got a pothole in front of his house and he's tired of driving over it. We agree, okay, let's go one more, let's go one more or two more. Very good example of that is we did some work to Reith Avenue about three, four years ago. And we stopped short of Dickens because at that time, the intersection of Dickens and Reith was in great shape. And now I have to go ask my street department to go fix it because we didn't do it while we were there. It was in pretty good shape when we were there, two years later, it's gone. I really kind of wish we would have because now I've got to take my street crews and we got to go over there and do that for four weeks. So there's, there's a fine line there between, you know, going far enough and then wanting to go farther. Change orders can be for additional work, so we want to add a fire hydrant, we want to replace a fire hydrant. The fire hydrant we have there, when we tried to use it, it broke. A lot of times we break valves when we try to isolate water mains because our valves are old, they're in the ground, they're, they're aging. We break a lot of valves too that we need to replace when we're doing isolation work. So that can also be additional work or a change order. And change orders can be in response to differing field conditions. Again, just this week, Dickens and Claflin, there's a water line in the way. Fortunately, our crews are doing it, but they have to relay some storm sewer now. We didn't know there was a water main there, we didn't know it was in the way. So our crews are going to do it, but if we had a contractor doing it, I'd be back before you with a change order, asking to lower that storm sewer. We also have different, different materials. So sometimes we want to go another class up on your concrete pipe or we want to add some thickness to our water mains. So we'll want to bump those up, and of course, that costs a little bit more. We also have neighborhood needs and businesses. So we start with traffic control, put all of our traffic control up, and then the phone rings off the hook because some business doesn't have access. Okay, that's a legitimate complaint, we need to go investigate. Maybe we need a temporary road, maybe we need a temporary driveway. Great example of that is we're out on West Anderson right now, working out there. Huge impact to those businesses, gigantic impacts. We're doing everything we can to mitigate that. We're, we're putting down gravel roadways, we're putting down temporary surfacing, trying everything we can to try to mitigate those impacts to those businesses. So that's another thing that comes up. A lot of times neighborhoods want, if we're working in neighborhoods, more speed limit signs, speed control trailers, all kinds of complaints that we get because, you know, now we've got people driving through neighborhoods. And then also some technology changes. So as Wyatt was talking about, between initial concept and bid is typically 18 to 24 months. And in that time, we can get a lot new, a lot better traffic signals. We can get a lot better controllers, streetlights, all sorts of stuff that between your design and when you go to build it, they either have something better that we want to use or maybe what we expect is out of date now. And that's happened a couple of times. It just happened on North Manhattan with some cameras. There's a newer generation of traffic cameras out now. You'll see them, they look like a little hat. You don't see the eye terrace, long eye terrace anymore. You see these little hats. And that camera is a 360-degree camera. So it saves my staff quite a bit of time for maintenance because I only have one instead of four. It also cuts down on false calls because I've only got one instead of four. So we did switch to those. Again, there's a little bit of cost to that. Then, of course, you have the supply chain issues, which everybody is dealing with now. We're dealing with it like everybody else. Our signal up on Dennison and Kimball is about 20 weeks behind, hoping to have that by Christmas. So we are dealing with those also. Then on top of change orders, then we have a change in scope. And change in scope always comes back before the commission. Change in scope is, this was the original concept, we want to do this also. It's not connected, but it's close. There's some, there's some savings we can achieve by being onsite, but it's a change in scope. We told you we were going to do this and we're going to do this, but we're also going to add this. And so those change in scopes always come back before the commission. And a change in scope would be in addition to an original bid contract or a substantial alteration. So those kinds of things come back. Our last change in scope was North Campus, when we built the detention ponds up on North Campus, those two big ponds up there. We came back before the commission at that time. Athletics was willing to kick in a third of the cost. The foundation helped pay for a third because we had a contractor in the area. We approached that contractor, asked what they would charge to build that. We got a quote from them, it was a very competitive quote. And then we came back before the commission and got authorization to proceed forward with that. So that was probably our last change in scope. We don't do a ton of those, but there are some of those every now and again that we come back before you with. Change in scope also is a sizable new component to work. So replace a section of water line or add some pedestrian street lighting. We had a street lighting on Third Street just a couple of months ago. And then change in scope can expand the geographic footprint of the area or of the project. So we're replacing road in one spot, we want to go two blocks over and replace some road in another spot. Change in scope also due to unanticipated requests from local, state, federal agencies. And those do happen. KDOT obviously updates their specifications every year. And if we're in the middle of a project with them, then they'll ask us to update whatever it is that they've updated. This happened on US 24 and Levy. We had a change order out there for some new traffic signal designs that KDOT came out with. KDOT's paying 85% of the bill, so they paid 85% of the change order. But I still have to come before you to get that approved, so, because it's our contract. So we do have some of those situations that happen also. Tonight, we're not talking about change in scope. Change in scope always comes back before the commission. But I'm trying to set examples of what the two differences are. So a change order, here's another example of a change order on a project at Kimball and Browning. During replacing the road, we found there's corrugated metal pipe under the road. We always replace corrugated metal pipe. We never leave it under the road because it doesn't lead to happy days. So those always come out and that was an example of one change order. Here's another one for Kimball, for the roundabout at Kimball and Vanessa. The original scope of this project went all the way to Westwood. So it went all the way down to here. And we actually cut all of this pavement replacement out of the final bid because we thought we were over budget. Bids came in really, really competitive, really good prices. And talking with the Grand Mirror Business Association, they said, hey, you're here one time, you're going to impact my business one time, please don't come back in 12 months and fix Kimball. Please, while you're here, get it done. So we added some pavement replacement into that, came back before the commission, added the pavement replacement and got all of this done, and it's all fixed now. Again, trying to reduce that impacts to businesses. Construction is a huge impact, whether it's a business, whether it's a homeowner, whether it's a pedestrian, whether it's somebody trying to jog down a trail. There's huge impacts with construction. We want to get done in a timely order and then leave. Again, one more example of a change order, College Avenue. We ended up doing quite a bit more pavement work on College Avenue because we got a pretty competitive price on it. In hindsight, I wish I would have went all the way to Claflin because college between Dickens and Claflin is really bad. And I wish I would have replaced it a couple of years ago while I was there. But there was a lot of work going on around that time, so we stopped at Dickens. Again, hindsight's 20/20, but kind of wish we would have went all the way to Claflin now. But we came back before the commission on this one, asked the commission for those dollars to go ahead and replace that while we were in the area and doing work. Now here's, again, is our change of scope example. These are the detention ponds that are north of the stadium that we partnered with. We came back before the commission and asked for authorization to do a study, authorization to design and then authorization to award. Again, these change in scopes always come back before the commission. So I want to peel these aside and just focus on change orders. Any questions on those? Next slides. So obviously, some current challenges we have, underground utilities is a huge challenge. Everything today is underground, nothing is built overhead. We have fiber optics, telecommunications, Cox Cable, Omegle Telephone, IFN. You name it, it's underground. Nothing goes above ground anymore, so that is a huge challenge. And it's a challenge to get information from those utility companies where their utilities are because they typically just hire out to a contractor to put those utilities in the ground. That contractor isn't keeping track of where it's going. We have to keep track of that. So that, that is a huge challenge as far as utilities go. Restoration items, those can be a challenge too, especially when you're in a business area that's done a really great job of keeping their property up, they have great landscaping. You don't want to leave the place looking bad when you're done. You want to give them the same sort of respect that, that they had with their property before you got there. And then, of course, public impacts also, detour routes, residential roads, those things are tough to quantify during design. CIP projects typically have more unknowns as compared to subdivisions or greenfields. And that's typically the stuff, downtown, older neighborhoods, because there's just not great records where everything is. You know, there's water mains that we didn't know about, there's sewer lines we didn't know about. There's all sorts of stuff we find. Anderson Avenue, just last week when we were milling it, hit a water valve we didn't know was there. So there's all sorts of stuff in those older parts of town that we just don't know that's there. There just wasn't great record-keeping in the 1930s, 1940s, 1950s, there just, there just wasn't. And again, many items retain a relatively small amount. You know, water valves, a thousand dollars. Adjusting manholes, a couple thousand dollars. So they're, they're pretty small amounts, especially when you look at the type of delay that it would cause to wait four to six weeks to get before you'd ask you for $1,500 to fix a valve on Anderson. Leaving Anderson in a milled condition for four to six weeks would be a tough sell. That would be hard to explain to, to the public. So those small amounts are typically, your delay is a lot more intense or a lot harder to justify than the cost of the delay. Again, time lag, so for me to get an item to the commission is about four to six weeks between when I develop my memo, I get it together, I get it submitted, we review it, it gets on an agenda and it gets to you folks. It's typically about four to six weeks. So there's that delay, if, if we need to stop stuff. Any questions on those before I go to procurements? So procurement process adopted just a couple of years ago, actually. City Commission set the city manager's purchasing authority by resolution, adopted in 2020, and that authority is up to $50,000. Again, as Wyatt was saying, we specifically didn't get into the change order discussion during that because we knew it's complex, it's not easy. There's, there's a lot of discussion that has to happen. So we left it kind of silent on the change orders for the extra work. Again, only the city commission authorizes a contract amount and only the city commission can change that amount. Past practice was we evaluated the original bid contract price, change order amount and reason for change. And then we would write a memo and it would be reviewed by the city manager. Recently, a contract award, we have asked for an additional $50,000 amount, requested in that contract to approve those increases as needed. So back to projects again, real quick. Every project has a 10% contingency in our resolution. I think, I think several of you have asked me that before. If we have a contract for a million dollars, why is the bond resolution for 1.1 million? This is why, we carry that 10% contingency. All projects obviously have a contingency budget prior to bid. And then nearly all projects start out with about a 10 to 20% contingency prior to bid also. And then as we narrow those scopes down, then we start narrowing those contingencies down. So some policy considerations. Some administrative authority is common in agencies, federal, state, local, several cities. I've got a slide here shortly. Several cities have different ways that they handle this process also. It allows projects to proceed efficiently and reduce impacts to the public. Policies typically are tailored for just construction contracts. So this isn't for our standard purchasing. So if we're buying 14 widgets, this doesn't count for that. This is only for construction projects that have impacts to the public. Those would obviously go department head and city manager for approval. We've typically done that through an in-office memo. Policy considerations, so all change orders, regardless of approval level, are subject to internal controls. Again, Public Works handles them, legal handles them, finance handles them. They go through the system, everybody sees them, so there's multiple people handling them. So we have balances and checks on, on all of those change orders. Public Works has reviewed several other cities' change orders process. There's a lot of very common features amongst different cities, and I'll show you that here in just a minute. So again, the policy will only apply to change orders and not changes in scope. So here's kind of some pure cities. I'm in a group of city engineers, we get together once a month. We, this was one of our topics one week, talked about it. They're all pretty similar, they all kind of have the similar same approach, depending on what city you're in. So again, typical authority range is 5%, 5 to 10% of total contract for change orders, sometimes referred to as a contingency. A few of the cities had what's called a tier percentages, so depending on how much the contract is, is dependent upon your contingency amount. And that's really set, what they explained to me is, they set that for like a $100,000 contract because 5% of $100,000, 5 to $5,000. So they set that for the lower amount, not, not so much for the higher amount. Minimum amount set by practicality. Again, most draws distinction like Manhattan does between change order and contingencies and change in scope. And then the city manager and department head obviously play a key role in that as the management of authorities. And then ultimately, it's city manager who approves a change order, who you authorize to do. So a possible policy that, that we're looking at is consider a 5 to 8% contingencies for public infrastructure contracts, consider a flat amount for contingencies or a sliding amount. So you'd have a tiered system based on how much that original contract is. Our recommendation from Public Works would be a 5% contingency for all contracts through the design bid build process. We could implement that across-the-board approach. Change orders, again, multiple departments are impacted by them. And not only Public Works does projects, but you know, Parks is doing multiple projects every year. Utilities are doing projects every year. So there are multiple departments that are involved in this. Public Works Engineering Department, we do the vast majority of the projects, that's why we're here tonight. The new policy update would take at least six months, just with workload. I don't think we'd get back with you for a policy until after the end of the year. It's just the reality of the workload we have and the people we have right now. So it's going to take a little while, and that goes back to your statement about a city manager. We're not going to get back before, probably until the end of the year. So the city manager will definitely have way in on that. During this timeframe though, does the commission want to, want us to bring forth contracts with a 5% contingency until the new policy is adopted or a sliding scale? Those are questions that we had all, had also. So next steps, real quick. So next steps, real quick. Staff can bring back a policy manual resolution, six months or longer. If initiated earlier, then we could highlight that during contract awards and city commission actions. We do want to update our construction contracts to include these policies. We actually have a suite of what's called Engineers Joint Design Committee Documents, EJCDC. We have those documents. We've purchased them. I think Katie's had some training on them. We have two. It's what the vast majority of cities are using now. We just need to go through those line by line and figure out what fits for Manhattan and what doesn't. You know, that's a, that's a long process to get to that. That's probably 5,000 pages, maybe more of contract documents. So it's going to take us a little while to, to feed through that and figure out what fits for us and what doesn't. We don't want to push that policy before it's ready. And then obviously we'll have some staff training and some internal implementation on the backend, all of the logistics that happen behind the curtains that we have to have everybody on board with. So with that, I'll stand for questions or see if I can answer anything else. I know that it's a ton of material and I'm, hopefully I broke it down well enough.
You did. You did a great job. You know, I, I, I like the idea of having some authority in there just to keep things going and reality is projects can't just stop. I think knowing that we take the lowest bidder, I don't know if I'm able to say this correctly. And then if, if companies know that they have this additional contingency, like I worry we're gonna get lower bidders knowing, or knowing that they can just increase it. Does that, maybe that's a very cynical view.
Well, so that's actually a great point because even today, how the change order process works, there's two ways that change orders initiated. One, somebody in Public Works or somebody in the city says, hey, wait a minute, we want to add a fire hydrant there. I want you to give me a cost. Two is what's called a request for information. And the contractor is looking at something in the bid documents, doesn't understand them, sends in our RIO, request for information. We review that. We say, no, that's on page 37. That's, this is the detail you need to do. This is what that refers to. And just to give you kind of an example of how many of those we get and how many we deny, we had 37 requests for information on North Manhattan and I think we were on change order four. So there's a lot of requests for information that, that we say, no, wait a minute, that's covered here, that's covered there. So there is a process already for vetting that stuff out. And again, goes back to those project managers because they're spending hours and hours and hours circling and, no, that's covered here, that's under this bid item, that's here. So it goes back to that project manager. It does take a lot of time, but I do understand your question though.
When we, when we do a change order, so for instance, I, I know we've approved several for the Houston and Fourth Street.
Yeah.
Is that sequential? So like,
Yes.
Okay, so, so the original change, the original project was for, say, a hundred thousand dollars, then they come and ask for another $50,000. If they ask for a second change order, then it's a change from 100,050 or 150,000 to 200,000. Is that how it works?
Yes, that's correct, but after that initial 50, we would be back before you.
Right, but.
They, they don't stack. That's correct.
But it's still saying, we're changing from.
Correct, yeah.
And it's, the, the from is after the last change order, right? So we're, we're not saying we're going, the original bid was a hundred thousand dollars. We've done X many change orders and now we're up to 200,000 dollars.
No, that original, that 5% is on that original bid amount.
Right, okay.
Does that make sense?
So if you had a million dollar bid, 5%, you have $50,000 contingency. Once you exceeded a million 50,000, we'd have to come back before you.
Right, but the next one though, if it was 20,000.
We'd have to come back before you.
Okay, because that initial.
We've exceeded that 50.
Okay.
Are you asking about the proposal of a 5% or our, our, our existing?
Well, kind of both.
Where we've been asking for 50,000 additional in authority?
Yeah.
Or are you just asking about the general math process?
Kind of, kind of both, right? Because what I'm, what, Brian kind of answered my, my, one of my questions was that if we go over that 5%, any change order then would have to come back to us.
That's correct.
Which financially is good because it's good oversight. However, that four to six weeks, I would be concerned if it was like a $5,000 change.
Once we get to about three and a half, 4%, we're coming back to you.
Okay.
Because I don't want to get in the same scenario you're thinking right now.
Yeah.
Get to that. And, and that goes with our bids too. So our bidding process by state law is once, once you clear $50,000, you have to go to a formal bid. If I think my quotes are going to be 47,000, I'm probably going to go to a bid.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm just nervous I'm going to be over that.
Right.
And I don't want to go to quotes and then have to turn around and go to bid because I just wasted six weeks. Once we get close to that number, we're going to be back before you. But here, real quick, I just put some data together today and you can kind of see how very rarely we've even come close to that 5%. These are projects over about the last year and a half, two years. And the details where we started and where we ended as far as pluses or minuses. So you can see the vast majority of them are, you know, 1 and 2%, a couple of 3%. The ones that are for, if you notice Fremont Streets, Houston Street, where am I? I'm downtown. I'm digging an infrastructure that I don't know is there. We found a couple of fuel tanks already and all kinds of stuff. So back to what I was talking about during the presentation that typically subdivisions, greenfield, all of those are a lot easier to dig in. This kind of, kind of relays that same point. You can see Fremont, we're at 4.6%.
Really only 40, 45% on Houston.
4.6.
No, but we're only 45% complete on Houston Street?
On Houston, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we're about half done. Well, we have the whole 500 block yet. We've done the 300 block.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking of how long, because like it got, it got milled and then was gravel or has been gravel for a long time.
Typically, the last half of projects go faster than the first half.
Okay.
And typically your change orders go down as you go further along through a contract. Houston's going to go faster on the backend because I don't have a bunch of storms that I got to put in the ground.
Right.
That takes time and effort and energy and risk.
Yeah.
Again, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Me?
Yeah.
Brian, you know, you have a contingency, 7 to 10% written to most of these contracts. So if I need a new water main or something, does that come out of the contingency? Or does that, or do you come to me for a change order because it's?
So we have a contingency prior to bid.
Yeah.
Once we bid, that contract is locked and the only way to change it is come back to you.
There is not a 7% contingency in that contract.
There's nothing, no fat in that contract.
Not in the design bid build.
Yeah.
And the other contracts, yes.
Yeah.
In my budget for that project, yes, I have over budgeted to make sure I have enough money to, to complete the project.
Okay.
But not in that contract. That contract I got to come back to you with.
One, just one other question. It seems to me, we, we always said lowest and best bid. And, you know, we didn't have to take the lowest. For example, this is when I was a county commissioner, but the transfer station, we went with Ham Quarries. And Waste Management was not happy with us at all, but their dump is at Rolling Meadows, which is not a safe place. And so we were able to argue, even though we got sued, that we were going with not just the, not the lowest, but the lowest and best.
I'll, I'll kick it over to Katie or I can answer. Go ahead.
Our standard in the charter ordinance is the lowest responsible bidder who submits a responsive bid. So that we'd have to change the charter order and, or the charter ordinance says if that's for the, that's for design bid build, or the commission can adopt an alternative process for a specific project, which could include a different standard. The thing that we've talked about and we're working on is this lowest responsible bidder is making sure that if we're, if we're going to decline someone who's the lowest bidder because we don't think that they're responsible, that we can substantiate that with documentation. And that we have a basis for doing that. Some cities pre-qualify bidders or they ask for qualifications as part of the bid so that they're, they can ensure that that is a responsible bidder. That's not something that we have historically done, but something we'd like to consider in the future.
Yeah, is there a statutory definition of responsible?
No, this is in our charter ordinance, we've actually chartered out of the statute.
Okay.
That has a different standard and that's the standard that when we redid the ordinance several years ago, Public Works looked at a whole bunch of examples and we met with, we met with them and looked at examples and that was the one we came up with. We could, we can, we have the power, the city commission has the power, I should say, to change that.
So how, how do we define responsible?
We don't define it right now. It's not defined in the ordinance. Which is typical. It's not actually usually defined in, in the standards. What, the way it's implemented is, as I said before, like you would ask for certain documentation about their financial fitness or their experience or other things to determine if they're responsible. And that is a common way to determine responsibility more broadly.
And typically when we have a bidder that we haven't worked with before, we ask for a financial statement from their bond company, from their bank, from their lender. That's not uncommon for us to do. You have to remember that the vast majority of our bidders, we work with multiple, multiple, multiple times.
There are, there are provisions in the contract documents that define, you know, the type of documents and type of information we can request from that bidder to prove their responsibility or fitness for that job. And so there, so that's, that's one of those things that would need to be reviewed as part of an update to our contract documents, just to ensure that that information is, is leading us to a point where we could safely accept or recommend rejection of a particular bidder in that case.
Yeah, and I guess I, I could kind of, I, I would like us for, I would like for us to be as transparent as possible with the, with that process too. You know, just kind of why I was asking about the responsible thing, you know, how, how do we define that? I think if we're looking at, I know a lot of the projects that we do are very large in scope and we're not going to get somebody who's fairly new in the industry, but if there were someone who, who wants to get into doing, you know, taking on city contracts, how can they, how can we make that available to them and not just the same people that we've gone, you know, gone after over.
And typically how we handle that is we'll bid lower cost projects a couple of times a year just to try to help people get started. Our sweet spot for our contractors are a million to 10 million for bonding. So, you know, our highest efficiency is in that ratio. When we get to that ratio, that's when we get our best prices. But we do bid a lot of projects there in the 350 to 500,000 dollar range. Because we know companies have a hard time getting bonded, getting started. I'm sure Peter can tell you. Construction is crazy capital intensive. You can drop $30 million starting a company and you're not going to get a paycheck for nine months because you, you just don't have bids and lined up. So construction is crazy expensive to get into and that's honestly, that's part of the problem that we're facing. It's just that capital cost, especially with interest rates up, that capital cost is just keeping a lot of people from moving into that next tier of construction.
Does the state of Kansas have a list of pre-qualified contractors?
For specific types of contracts they do. So for their painting they do, for their bridges they do, but not for every single contract. It just depends on what it is.
Do we ever work with, because there's like a federal, federal, what's that?
DBE.
Uh, maybe.
DBE.
Yeah, like, like, you, you go through a process to be able to do like federal contracts?
Yep. So almost all of our grants, we do that with because they're federal or state dollars. Anytime you have federal or state dollars, you got to do DBE disadvantaged business, minority owned business, Davis Bacon Wages, all of those things that you have to go through. That's, that's part of taking other people's money.
Yeah, you're right.
Brian, this isn't really a change order question, but when we're doing road construction, like what's the life expectancy of the, like what are we building to?
Great question. So asphalt's typically about 10 to 12 years. And then you can figure about another 50% of what you originally paid to redo it. Asphalt or concrete, we're getting close to 30 years out of some of our slabs. Some of them are more. Concrete, we've redesigned our mix and so we're seeing some really great results from that. McCall Road was our first change in mix. McCall Road's 12, 13 years old now. Carrying 30,000 vehicles a day, carrying semis every day and it looks spectacular. So we're really happy with how we've been doing with our new mix and our new design. And a lot of that is we're working with our industry partners too, with what they can supply locally so we can keep our costs down. But yeah, roughly asphalt's about 10 years.
So when you're making that determination, I mean, I, I just have heard from a lot of people lately, it feels like we keep tearing, I, I know this isn't true all the time, but tearing up the same areas and that having to redo work. And so that was where that question came from and just, I don't know.
Anderson Avenue where we're out working now, that was built in 1960s. So that slab made 65 years and we didn't put a penny in it. So it's time. It, it needs to be done. Kimball Avenue is 1980s, so we're doing a lot of work on Kimball. We have some work to do yet on Kimball, between Candlewood and Hudson, Martin Luther King Boulevard, between Point and Fort Riley Boulevard. That was overlaid back in the 90s. So it's, you know, we've got 15 years out of that. There's, there's a long list and, and when we come back next year for the street update, it's not going to be good news.
Is it just something that like, once it starts to fail, it fails really fast?
That's part of it. Once you get water intrusion, one of the biggest things for asphalt is ultraviolet light. Ultraviolet light degrades your oils and your connectors in your asphalt. So regardless of what the weather is, you know, asphalt's only going to last so long, but that is true. Once you start getting those cracks in it and water can infiltrate and then you get the free saw cycle and then it just goes downhill, but.
I'm just, you know, because it seems like this year, we just saw everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was that January, February killed us. The worst thing that can happen is you can have a warm day and get precipitation and then it gets cold.
Yeah.
That is, I mean, that is, you know, you're going to have a bad couple of months.
Brian, can you expand a little bit on the subgrade and some of the conditions that which asphalt and concrete were put down in the past and what you're doing differently today?
So in the 2010, 2011, we went to a four inch rock base that we are requiring under all new streets. Before that, there was no rock base, we were just put on dirt. And, you know, that didn't last as long as we'd like it to, so we went to a rock base. We've actually bumped that up now and we're, we're going to six inches under all, all of our arterials. We also, speaking of asphalt, we did go to a little higher grade oil because the higher grade oil wasn't that much more money for what we think we're going to get out of longevity. So we did go to that also, but yeah, we've got some subbase that we've been performing some testing on and that seems to be working pretty well.
Peter, I asked Brian for some information last week for a presentation I was doing and he estimated that between the city and shilling, close to 17,000 potholes have been filled this year.
Yeah, we filled about 16,000 shilling, kept track of tonnage, so we had to take a guess of is that two shovelfuls or three shovelfuls? So we had to kind of interpolate. But we think we're somewhere between 17 and 18,000 potholes this year. And we, we could do another 5,000. I'm just, I mean, I, it's the truth, we could.
I mean, I just hope that next year we don't have 18,000 to fill. Is that, I mean, is that the goal of?
I'm hoping for eight, but.
Eight, okay. I mean, like, let's have that goal in mind.
Some years, 2021, I think we only had 5,000. So it was a really nice winter and we didn't have that kind of weather. The other thing that kills you is plowing. Plowing just kills your roads and I mean, everybody likes to have roads that are clear, but that plows, you know, 2,500 pound plow with a steel blade on it. So you know, it's going to abuse the roadway.
It's a real philosophical discussion to have in the future. And we've talked about it a lot internally. Taking the backlash of not clearing your streets and having them water by noon.
Do we salt and sand or do we plow? Yep. And we honestly, every snow, we have that debate because we know what damage that does and you know, for our crews driving snow plows, they're driving down the street thinking, I'll be back in March and I'll be back in April because I'm going to be plowing or fixing potholes when I plow, but we, we have that debate every time it snows.
Just the slightest of imperfection in the road catches that steel blade and causes a lot of damage.
Yeah. If you ever want to ride along, we've got an extra seat in the truck, so let us know. I'll even give you a hard hat, so.
Do we get to drive it? No, I was just joking.
Probably need to talk to our sure about.
No, Jason said no. Jason said no.
You have your CDL.
I, I get it.
We are hiring for that position though, so if you know anybody that.
I think we already discussed that I'm not a great driver. Wyatt, were you suggesting a software earlier about tracking these change? Did you say something about that or did I make that up? Did you say something about that or did I make that up? I might have made that up.
There's softwares for everything, but no, I, I wasn't suggesting that necessarily.
I think I thought you were suggesting something for like project management and, and different things or, or tracking changes.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, internal methods for project management is, is something that, that in, we need to, we are having conversations about. And, and, you know, we, we don't have a unified system for that today. We have a lot of independent softwares. We have a lot of spreadsheets. We have a lot of, of Word documents that individuals are, are using. So it is sometimes difficult to, to gather the global picture of all of the projects and their statuses and, and keep those things up to date. There are tools for that of various cost and complexity. But, you know, is, is that a part of our internal project management strategy to develop some parameters around that possibly? But it's, it's, that's a separate consideration from the change order conversation, obviously. There, there are methods to track those contract values and, and add, you know, base contract plus change order one, plus change order two. And those, those type of things are, are fairly well developed.
Well, I think something like this, I mean, this is really helpful to see, you know, how these projects have stayed or, or not within, within, you know, their budget. But I think, you know, if we're talking about establishing any kind of like performance indicators or anything like that, I don't know that that's for us to set. That's, that would to me be more of the city manager's prerogative to have the, that type of performance metric. But this kind of information, I think, is incredibly helpful for, for us.
I'd say for the public.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brian, I think the problem was that people felt we filled one pothole 17,000 times.
We probably have filled potholes more than once. I, I can't, I can't say that we haven't. It's same thing as plowing streets. We'll plow the same street, you know, once or twice or three times, just because it doesn't stop snowing. Potholes are no different. We definitely do.
Well, that's, that's another philosophical question. You know, do you fill the pothole or do you wait it for it to snow again? Yeah.
And then that goes back to how much effort, energy do you want to put into that pothole? Because every minute I spin on this pothole is another minute I'm not getting to that pothole. So we have to weigh those, those all the time and what, how much crew, crew staff do I have?
Yeah, the, the ones at Anderson and Sunset though, I think they were there every day all winter.
Oh, yeah.
I feel so sorry for the guys.
We knew we were going to be milling and overlaying Sunset and Anderson, so we didn't want to put a lot of money in it. We were kind of trying to limp it along because we knew we were coming back with a major mill and overlay.
So how, how do we feel as a commission about, at least short term, for these projects? I, I mean, I, I feel like we've, we're, we get a change order just about every consent agenda. And, I don't know, has, has that, has that been working for you, like what we've been doing?
It takes a ton of staff time. There's, there's nine people that research, that review my memo. When I write a memo, there's nine people that goes through before it gets to you.
And so, because I'm just thinking, you know, a 5% contingency, that's $50,000 on a $1 million project. And you said most of our projects are over.
They're in the one to five, one to seven. That's, that's kind of the sweet spot for our contractors. Anything above that and you're really not gaining efficiencies on scale.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I know, I think one of the, the changes that, that threw up a flag for me, it was like a, like a $20,000 change on a $100,000 project or something like. It was, it was a small project.
It was the fence. And I remember you saying something about.
Yeah, because it was like a quarter of the, you know, and that's kind of hard to, hard to say that's not a scope change for, because it is a small scope, right? And I think that was kind of what threw up my, my ears.
And those are why some cities do that flat rate, because those little ones, you know, you can have a decent sized change order and it looks like a huge percentage.
Yeah.
That's, that's why they do those flat rates. That one was, it was the gate out of the wastewater treatment plant. And with the levy project, we had to remove all of that fence, put all that fence back that was on us because we were on levy project. So we took it out of the core project because we didn't want to pay by American for our fence. We wanted to be able to get a local contractor to do it. So we took it out of the levy project, we bid our own project. And then in the middle of the project, we decided instead of having the swinging gates, we wanted to put the infrastructure in to get a slide gate.
Yeah.
So that's what, in the future, we're going to have a slide gate in there where you can just pull up, put your badge out, it slides open. So that's what that change order was about.
The other one we did recently was in Aggieville with BHS.
I think, yeah, I remember that one.
That was a $106,000 contract. We just brought back $20,000. It should have come back to you all. It's substantial. That original scope didn't anticipate us taking a electrical line down the sidewalk on 12th Street from the alley north to Fat Shack.
Right.
But that's what we had to do. So creating the fencing and the pedestrian access to those businesses is essentially what we change ordered in.
But are we, are we designating that as, as a change of scope or as a change order? Because I, I feel like we, well, I feel like everything comes across as change order amount, even if it's, does it not? I feel like when we're approving things, it's saying.
Pretty sure that one was an amendment to the contract.
Yes, an amendment. Maybe that's what it is.
The contract, the contract was to put the power underground and then feed all of those businesses from underground. The current Fat Shack goes across somebody else's property. Their electrical connection. It'd be like your neighbor's power line coming across your property. Well, when we went to ask that neighbor for an easement, they said no. They said, we don't want their power across our property. So we had to go out into the street and then come down. And that, that's why we ended up under a sidewalk and then we've got to worry about pads and we had to build safety barriers for pads. And it got pretty extensive then.
It's why we drew a distinction between change in scope and a change order.
Yeah.
Because when you see them, they look very similar. You know, we had this prior agreement, we were getting these services, now we're getting these services. But it is an amendment to that contract, not necessarily a change.
A field adjustment, yeah.
So we're seeing those as amendments, not for change of scope?
Correct.
Not change order, right? I might be interpreting this wrong. When we're saying a, or talking about this 5% contingency on each of the projects, that's assigned per project or is it, you know, if we have?
Per contract.
Or per contract? So it's, you can only use that 5% on that contract?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
So like for, for CECO, where we're at 17 million for that or 18?
Well, that's a CMAR, or that's a design bill.
Oh, right. We don't have to worry about it.
It's actually built in.
Built in, okay.
But you do have an Anderson Avenue contract that's going to be bid here by the end of the year. Are you guys still around 7 million? Are you north of that now?
Seven plus.
Seven plus.
Okay.
And some of that's ARPA, right?
Yeah.
Some of it is ARPA.
Some of it is. But it's a, it's a perfect example of, are you going to allow 5% on that contract as a contingency?
Right. 5% would be.
350.
350K.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's probably, is there another one you're thinking about bidding between now and then?
None of that scope. There's some street maintenance we're going to bid, nothing anywhere close to that.
So that, that would probably, if tonight you were like, you know, we're comfortable with 5%, we would take those bids, add the 5%, bring back that contract. If you're not comfortable with doing it tonight, we'll bring it back just like we normally have and we'll work through that project.
That one's about an 18 to 24 month process, so it's going to be very lengthy.
Yeah. Well, and it's like, you know, do we want to, do we want to approve a 5% contingency or do we want to go and approve seven $50,000 change orders?
Or seven $10,000 change orders.
Right.
And I'm, I'm concerned about the time lag that you mentioned, that it takes four to six weeks to affect one of these changes.
Especially when you're on Anderson Avenue. I, I don't want, and Peter can talk more about, you know, what that would entail to leave for four weeks and come back. But just the optics of 22,000 cars a day driving down a street with no work for four weeks.
And realistically, right now, those things are happening in real time. Right? I mean, tho, those changes are having to occur. We're not halting projects and waiting for things to get to us. It's just a, if we don't approve it, I guess we're not completing the project. I mean, that's the option or we're having to find it somewhere else.
Or, or they're having to do other things in the project while they wait for the answer on this.
If we can, yeah.
Yeah.
And we've been pretty lucky that way that, that we've been able to kind of shift stuff around and people have stayed on job sites. But that risk is at the contractor's discretion. And if they don't feel comfortable that you're going to approve a $7,000 change order in six weeks, they can absolutely get up and leave.
Yeah. I don't know, John and Jamie, you two probably have the most experience with, I don't know, Johnny, I think you've, have you done any big construction stuff outside of the city?
Usually we would have an overall budget and we'd have authority to spend up to that budget.
Up to that budget.
And the only if we were going to go over the budget that we had to go back and ask for a change.
Right.
So really, once we have the budget approved, we might write a contract for less than that budget and we could do anything we wanted.
Right.
Get the budget.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm personally, a lot, have a lot more experience with CMAR and prefer that also from the timeliness of it and the collaboration through. I think there is a disconnect when you have somebody designing a project. And it's all of the, I, I can't imagine everything that goes into getting that information over to the contractor. So I, I, I would be a fan of more of those. I, I just doesn't sound like that those are usually used for public infrastructure. I know that they come with their own sets of headaches as well. But, but overall, I think that's where my familiarity is. But I do think including contingency on projects via change.
And having the same pool of engineers and the same pool of contractors bidding on projects helps because, you know, after bidding on to engineering firm X projects, I know what their expectations are. So that also helps too. When you get to a bigger city and you have 27 different engineering firms and 35 different construction firms, there are a lot of, there's a lot of back and forth.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I do like all, all the contractors that we're using, it seems like they're doing a good job. I also want to recognize that the more people we have bidding on projects, that's going to keep things more competitive as well. And so I, you know, I think just looking at, at all options to get everyone to the table.
Back to your question about change orders too. So we bid roughly 30 to 40 million dollars of projects a year. So when we do get a change order request that, that's a sidewalk ramp or whatever, we do go back and see what those have bid for through the year. We have a running tally, running total, see what those things bid through the year. So if a contractor asks for a change order request, that's, you know, 5, 10% above what we've been paying, there's a conversation that happens, you know? So don't think that the contractor is just coming up with a number out of their head because we have bid 30, 40, 50 million dollars of projects already. We know what those things go for. Anything else?
So we're looking at the recommendations here. And the question to the commission, I think, is do we want to accept this recommendation of including a 5% contingency? Oh, sorry.
You're good.
Before we make any recommendations, would anyone in the public like to make any remarks?
I came down here, I might as well say something. My name's Peter Clark. I'm vice president and CEO of Byer Construction. We're one of the heavy civil engine, civil construction firms here in town. Do a lot of work with the city, probably one of our biggest clients that we have. Just for disclosure sake, I used to work for Bryan Johnson as the traffic engineer for the city until 2015. Worked for Potawatomi County as a county engineer.
You want to come back?
I'm currently gainfully employed, so I'm, I feel pretty good about it. But I've had a unique, I guess, perspective seeing it from multiple sides. And really what the change orders come down to is trust. Do you have trust in the judgment of those who are, you're putting in charge of deciding, is this the right thing for the city to do? And obviously, having controls in place are very important. You can't not have controls. But those controls should be dictated by what is your trust. All interactions, all human interactions are, are dictated by how much trust you have with each other. And the more trust there is, the more, I guess, for lack of a better word, it's like the lubrication that allows the engine of, of our interactions to work. You have trust, you have that, that oil that allows everything to move appropriately. With change orders, if you have that trust with your engineering staff, with your project management staff to make the right choice that's in the best interest of the city within the parameters they've been given, then you'll have a system that works pretty efficiently. When you lack that trust and things start to break down, like the instance of having a contractor waiting for four to six weeks for a decision to get made. The number one, the most important thing for a contractor is that you keep your people busy. And if there's anything more important than that, I don't really know what it is. I've learned in the number of years I've been now in the contracting side, if you keep your people busy, you can become profitable. If you have people sitting, waiting, that's an expended cost without any revenue tied to it. So when you get to a situation where you cannot progress or you have a risk that you're not willing to take on, you have to find a way to move so you can make some sort of revenue with that resource. So it's a very real situation you might come across. I think as a local contractor, we try to be as, what's the right word, as cooperative as possible and not drop the ball for the public. We care a lot about how the public feels about our jobs, just as much as city staff does, as much as you as the city commissioners do. We want, we don't want them to be disappointed in what's going on. So sometimes we will, in the current situation, decide to keep moving forward with that risk. Because the risk of losing public favor is also real. We want to be considered, you know, the hometown hero when we're delivering for the, for the city. So we will do what's necessary. However, we don't want that to be abused and there's a limit to how far we will go in just holding on tight, waiting for that change order to come through before we, we'll say, hey, we can't handle. And that's, that's too much of a risk for us to take. So I think the pol, any policy you put into play, you know, the 5%, whatever it is you decide to do is going to help create that level of trust that can be used and then proven, which I think Brian's shown with the percentages he's shown you, that they've proven time after time that they have come in and helped save the city money. There are plenty of times where they've spent more than the contract, but all in the city's best interest, I think. And all within a reasonable amount. So I, I hope that you take that into consideration. The contractors, I think generally, most of us are, are relying heavily on that, that trust to exist between all of us, between us and the engineering staff, and engineering staff and the commission, and all of us with the public, so we can deliver the best product for the city. Without, I'll take any questions you guys have about my perspective on projects.
I'm probably fine with the 5%. I think the reporting we got was good as long as we have a way to review what's happening. So we're, you know, so we're, you know, we can tell people who are doing oversight, we're seeing it. And as long as the numbers come in fine, I don't think there's a problem.
And if I remember correctly, from the table that you had of other cities, 5% was fairly common among, among them.
Yeah, I, I, I still like the sliding scale one as though a little bit more with the 3% for things over 5 million. I just, I know we want to finish projects, but I also want us, like that much money over 5 million, that's a whole other project that we're not going to be able to do. If, if that's ungranted, if, I guess it's just when it comes to us. But I don't know, I thought, I thought that was a valuable one. Because I also recognize those smaller projects have a tendency, you know, $100,000 project, you can eat through that 5% really, really quickly. So I did like that that gave the option to bump that one up to 10%.
We actually, the engineering department actually liked the sliding scale better. But when we talked to other departments, it kind of became, how are we going to track this and who's keeping track of, you know, how much we're, and so it just became a lot easier just to do a flat rate. That way, everybody knew you just add 5% instead of, okay, is this one three, is this one five? Is this, so that's why we kind of settled on the five. From a department perspective, we like the sliding too. But, you know, we have to deal with other departments and we're trying to make things as easy as possible. And so that's why we settled on the five.
Okay.
So one of the other examples of the, just the math not working out is if you have a million, if you have a $999,000 project, there's a 10% contingency by that example. But if you have a $1 million, $25,000 project, you now have a 5% contingency on that. And so it, it, it created complexities both in tracking as well as, as some arbitrary, it felt arbitrary to start to assign at those breakpoints in the scale. Now, there's maybe some more thought that could go into the percentages or the, or the, the groupings of the projects. But 5% is very easy to administer. Would you roll through 5% on a small project pretty quickly? Yes. But, you know, the majority of the projects are in a value where the 5% seems to make some sense.
And just intuitively, 5% on 5 million is 250,000. I can't imagine a change order process that would not be out of scope. I mean, that's a huge number, right? I can't imagine something that would be a change order that would not be out of scope. I think we would be back before you, just on an out of scope. Now, you know, maybe we want to do three more blocks.
you know, maybe we wanna do three more blocks of paving or something, which would be out of scope and we have to come back to you to, to do that, but just as a, just as an overall arching number, I mean, I agree with you, that's a big number. I can't see us not staying in scope and having that much overrun.
Wyatt, I think going back to Karen's initial comment at the very beginning of your presentation, we're expecting, um, city manager Dunland to be arriving in about a month's time. Is it possible for us to concur with adding a five percent contingency to contracts that are coming up in the next three months? And then, um, just revisiting this once she's here and ha- can offer her experience as well? Is that, would that impair your ability to do the other, uh, work required for updating policies and procedures?
So, would, right, I mean, we would need to, the whole goal is, I think, to, is to generate a policy with some value in it, some methodology for us to follow. Um, we're relying on, you know, there's some past practices that weren't really codified in policy. Um, there, you know, our current practice is a fifty thousand, regardless of the contract amount, that certainly helps. Um, a gap filler of five percent over the next couple of, of months, um, certainly helps uh, as streamline some of that process as well. Um, I don't know that we could, we could potentially start working on some sort of policy manual, uh, with, you know, blanks to be filled in later. That'll be based on workload as well. So, if, if the direction is, you know, five percent until we have an, another discussion about it in a few months, I think that's an acceptable alternative and, and we don't wanna waste time going down a path that you then redirect us on, but I, I think it's a short enough timeframe that, that we could, uh, make do.
Commissioners, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's gonna take such a long time to put together a policy anyway, like, I kinda like what you said, you know, the, the, the contracts that we are working on in the near term, let's go ahead and put that in there just for some consistency sake. Um, and then, yeah, I mean, obviously, once Danielle gets here, she'll, she'll have her, uh, input as well. Um, and it sounds like we won't be too far down the road with a policy by the time she gets here anyways, so.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, but what I have taken away from tonight's discussion and what I hear a lot from people who deal with the city is the amount of time that things take. And so, I would like to charge Danielle to see if she couldn't, um, expedite the four to six weeks. I mean, I don't, you know, on, on these things and, and things with planning and zoning, um, I mean, I'm not gonna walk in the first day and do anything, but I just think that that could, is something we really might ask her to facilitate in the future.
Well, yeah, certainly in our, our scope as commissioners and, you know, we can, we can definitely give her that challenge for sure.
So, Wyatt, are you comfortable, and Brian, are you comfortable with marching orders?
I, I believe so.
Yes, thank you, commissioners.
Yeah, thank you.
Jason, is there anything as that you would like to bring up as our briefing?
Yeah, I have a couple items. Um, we, very close subject matter. We have four meetings remaining until Danielle starts. The seventeenth of September and October first are legislative nights. They have items on the agenda already, ready for action just to keep us, uh, going in terms of business being conducted by the city. September twenty-fourth and October eighth, there are topics, but if you would prefer to wait for Danielle, we can wait. There, there are topics that have to do with development, have to do with common consumption, have to do, and when I say development, I'm talking both in Aggieville and downtown. So, they're major initiatives, they're significant. If the commission doesn't wanna hear those things without Danielle in the room, we can wait. If, but, and it's two meetings. So, it's really up to you all. Just looking for that guidance.
I think waiting, but it, well, if we wait, it, I, I, I was gonna say, what are the consequences? Um, I also don't expect her to be s- super quick up to speed on all of those things. So, i- in my opinion, I, I'm fine continuing with those on there, um, knowing that I, I don't think she would be able to come in and immediately get to those things if we waited, um, or, or have opinions.
No, I think those are, those are reasonable things that we should move ahead on and, um, work to satisfy. They're not policy issues. They're, they're more, uh, substantial, what do we do next issues.
Thank you. Uh, we do have, um, the league annual conference is coming up quick. The, um, Hyatt Regency is sold out, so there are a couple other options there. If you'd like to go down and stay in Wichita and go to that conference, but the conference hotel is sold out. So, if you make that decision, let us know. We'll get you registered. If you wanna be a voting delegate, let us know. I think we get so many as a, as a community. These are things the clerk's office keeps, um, trying to track down, so, um, I'm just relaying messages. See, Thursday, September nineteenth, we've got joint city-county and intergov. Uh, luncheon will be the twenty-third of September, Monday. Happy to answer any questions, um, agenda related or otherwise that you may have.
I, I have a question. I think either Wyatt or Brian may, and thi- this kind of goes back to what we were talking about. How often do we advertise those vacancies that we have, like in engineering and stuff like that?
We've had a engineering vacancy advertised for at least twenty-four months. We've gone to conferences, we've gone to student internships, we've gone to, uh, I actually was on the senior design project last year, trying to talk people into applying. Yeah, we've had them open for quite a while. I actually, um, when I was preparing this presentation, I went on to local consultants' website. One had eight positions open, another one had five. Yeah, it was, it was depressing.
Um, are you able to make October, sorry? Make October a little bit larger? I know that's what you're trying to do, but. Um, what I just, I think October is a five-week month. Is that the case?
It is.
So, um, I know that Jamie and John are both out towards the end of the month.
Yeah, I'll be gone during, for the fourth and the fifteenth.
Okay, all right. And I will be out for two as well.
Technically, I think I'll be here for, I know I'll be here for the fourth. The fifth is, um, is questionable, if, if we have to have it.
Yeah, we usually take the fifth Tuesday off.
Twice we have, um, in January, we had a snow day and so we used the fifth week in January as our meeting date. And then in March, I was at a conference in DC and so we did not meet that night, but then, so, um, I wa- I will look at this and just see if we wanna consider taking one of the normal days off the calendar and switching them around a little bit.
From a legislative standpoint, the first and the fifteenth, we, we have business prepared, so if we, a month advance is nice to know if we're gonna shift those around. Understandably, there's storms, there's events that happen where we have to cancel things, but even the clerk's office, knowing you're going to be gone, they'll start preparing things for Karen to sign, so. But if there's a desire to not have a meeting on a Tuesday in, in October, a- as you mentioned, you're going to be gone. John's gonna be gone the twenty-first through November fourth. If there's like three of you gone, clearly, we can't meet. So, we just need to know your calendars for October i- if you've got some conflicts.
Okay. Um, I have one other unrelated question as well. Um, Peter and I attended on, on Saturday. Police Director Pete had a town meeting at City Park, uh, to discuss several events that, um, had transpired recently in Manhattan. Um, there were probably about thirty people there. It, one of the questions was, they did have a poster up on the police Facebook page. That's not a place that I typically go just to hang out or to look and see what's on their calendar. Is there, what, is there a mechanism to get wider notice out about something like that?
Through the city? I mean, if Director Pete wants us to push things out on our media sources, we can clearly do that. Um, my experience has been RCPD has been way more effective of communicating with this community than, than most. They have a very active Twitter page and Facebook. Jared, you can elaborate.
This is referring to an RCPD event? I mean, you know, our PIO has good communication with the county's PIO and Riley County's PIO, so in the event that there's a big initiative or event, we're always happy to share that content to try and reach a larger audience, if that's uh, what the commission would prefer. That, that kinda cross-organization, agency collaboration, where we do that, uh, wh- when we can and when we know there's big stuff going on.
So, I don't, I, I think on his information that he sent, Director Pete, so he, he didn't include, I'm looking, I don't think he included any of the city staff on the-
I didn't know until you sent it to me.
Yeah.
On that new memorandum that he sent as well.
Oh, that, so the, the initial notice went to me and a couple of people in the county and
Law Board.
The law, was it the law board? So, um, yeah, I didn't see any public notice other than the poster that they posted on their site.
I don't know if they posted it on their social media. Um, that's how I kinda, well, I think that's how, maybe it was an email. But, yeah, and, uh, to me, that's, it's, it's tough. It's kinda that, that interagency communication is always a challenge. Cuz really, in order for us to share that, they would have to ask.
Which they didn't.
Yeah.
Not of me.
Yeah.
Yeah, you kinda came up with it quickly and came it out.
Yeah.
That's, that's part of the, the thing that always makes it, that's when there's not a lot of notice.
Right.
Uh, for, but that actually, my answer is one topic. I mean, we still have
plenty of time, but just something to think about. The law board appointments are gonna come up. So, you know, who wants to be, well, we only have one commissioner for this next.
Oh, I should check, John. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah, cuz I think we, we have one rotating, which will go to the county. You remember Karen? A- and then we've got two that we appoint at large. Yeah, so I think theirs is coming back, so we'll, um, be down to, you know, like Karen wants to stay on or-
I'm very concerned, confused because I thought it was only gonna be on there till March. And I asked somebody and they said, "No, you're, you have a two-year appointment," so I-
No, you're, I think we're all up in December.
Very well be.
I'll, I'll double check.
Yeah.
Back to you.
Can I just, um, I just say that, um, Atabas met and our new buses are in. We're still having major problems getting drivers.
So is the school.
And they're almost finished with the, um, work that they're doing on the building, so they'll be at Open House coming up.
Waiting on those buses for like two years.
Yes, I, I mean, you have to get in the line with KDOT and then the Fed, Feds and it's crazy.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, move to adjourn the September tenth, twenty twenty-four city commission work session.
Second.
Jared?
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yep.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McColl?
Yes.
Motion passes.